We're going off of that clock or Apple time? I'm good to start, right? We sit here for... You good? Yeah, okay. All right, the time is six o'clock and this will start the Granite Falls School Board meeting for October 22nd, 2025. Please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Geislin for our land acknowledgement.
I'm going to defer this land acknowledgement to Rachel Quarterman because she has really been practicing it.
We honor the first peoples of these lands by acknowledging that the area in which we gather is one of the traditional territory of the Stillawamish tribe of Indians. The Stillawamish people have inhabited these land and waters since time immemorial, and their descendants have remained in this territory to this day. The Stillawamish people have continued to practice the traditional ways of their ancestors, fishing, hunting, and gathering. The Stillawamish tribe has had these lands and cultural traditions passed on to them by their ancestors, who believe that everything has a spirit and that they are caretakers of these lands and waters.
Very much. Okay, in attendance tonight, we have Director Gockner, Director Dane, Director Kincaid, myself, Director Ladue, and Dr. Geislin. I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Director Carey from tonight.
Second.
Most of them may in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And then also in addition tonight, we have our student reps. We have five of them here tonight. So we have Elijah Seiler, Alyssa Reyes Hernandez, Violet Bryant, Joy Rose Niemann, and then Thomas Hancock as well. So welcome all. And I will do the same thing as we go through. I'll see if you guys have any comments as well, because your voice, that's why you guys are here. If you don't, it's fine. I don't want to put you on the spot, but we will go around for comments as well. Okay, so going on to item 2A, Board Comments. We'll start with Director Gockner.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. Director Dane?
Hi, I just am glad to be here. It's amazing weather and our sports teams, our band, seem to be doing fantastic. And I love seeing the presentations on Facebook of our staff and I hope that we keep that up. I, the introduction of Patty downstairs today, or this week, was awesome. I think she deserves it. And I know that she loves the preschoolers down there. So it is good to read, good to hear.
Appreciate it. Director Kincaid?
Um, not much to say. I'm sure that Dana's going to cover this in her report, but Halloween stuff is coming up and there's an event at Mountain Way and there's just all kinds of fun stuff. So excited about Frightening Falls to start off.
From my side, yes, this is the time of the season where we see frightening falls, the gravy falls. So again, JVJ, just nail it out of the park. We actually had, you know, as far as the board, I think it was great last week, there was a, there was a forum for candidates of the board to sit in front of the community. Had a pretty good turnout there. Those are interesting. It's available on YouTube, I think somewhere. It's posted in several places in the community. So that's been fun. It's great to see the engagement. But yeah, all in all, and I know Dana will, Dana always covers so much in her reporting and everything. But to piggyback on Bill, like I've seen, you know, the band, all of our sports teams, like something's in our water, right? I think. That's a good thing.
Good, good time.
So, but no.
We hope not lead, because we're not testing.
We know.
There's not that.
We know there's not lead in our water. Plus, that doesn't make superhuman capabilities. Okay, so then I will start off down at the end. Elijah, any comments that you'd like to share?
On Friday, we're gonna have first ones towels for Granite Falls. It's gonna be more geared towards families and people with more, you know, kids and all that.
Yeah.
If they want to take their kids to the house, they want to be flashing lights, people screaming as much.
Where's that gonna be at?
City Hall or Legion Hall.
Awesome.
I mean, it's the city hall.
So for those without nerves of steel.
Yeah.
Elijah, can you tell us about the dress up days that you have, I think it's next week that you have planned, right? Do you know what they are? I can't remember.
There is monochrome day, which is where you wear one color. They have a favorite meme day, I believe, which is, you know, your favorite meme day and wearing whatever you'd like on that day, like the jam day or so on and so forth. There is a, I think in extreme weather. Like parka.
You know. So good. And what else?
I cannot remember the other two.
I can't remember what I saw the sign over there, but yeah, okay. I look forward to that.
Appreciate it, Elijah. Alyssa, any comments?
Not really, but I just wanted to reiterate that I think all of our sports teams and our bands are doing a phenomenal job during the season.
Yeah, well, yeah. Thank you. Violet, anything?
Yeah, I agree with her. Nothing much right now, though, to comment on.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have dress up days coming next week because of homecoming. So do we know what those are at the high school?
Monday was like twin day, right? And then it was preppy versus, no, sorority versus frat and then preppy versus grunge.
To piggyback off of what she said, Monday's twin day, Tuesday's frat versus sorority, Wednesday is meme day. Thursday, Thursday is grunge versus preppy and Friday is black and orange or Halloween costume.
Right.
Other than that, I'm really proud of how our sports teams have been doing. I'm on one of them. It's really awesome to see how far the school has come so, this year.
Yeah. What team do you play on? Tell people.
Well, I play volleyball. I'm on JV right now. And I think we've gone like fourteen and two, three, fourteen, something like that.
That's amazing. That's awesome.
And varsity's gone fourteen, no, that's a lie. Varsity's gone fifteen and two, but clearly, yeah, our teams are doing really great right now.
It's great. It's awesome. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Joy. Thomas, anything from your side?
I would like to announce that our band took first place in our division at Yakima. And we are heading to Everett on Saturday to enjoy the lovely pouring rain weather. So that's all I have to comment on.
Well, actually.
Yeah, why don't we hear that part?
I think you have something else to announce.
Do I really have to announce?
Yes, you really do.
Yes.
Okay. I got a full ride to any 15 Ivy League schools of my choice.
Exciting. Congratulations. That's amazing.
Thank you.
Want to have to choose? Want to have to choose?
They choose me. And I've already heard news from Caltech, so.
Oh, nice.
Huge, huge news. I really appreciate it and thank you, Thomas, for sharing. You're welcome. Making us feel little.
Director Ladue and I got to see, meet a comment this morning and so we got to here this morning. That was, it was really nice to spend some time with him and talk about that and how life-changing that is. So we're really proud of him.
Yeah, lots of opportunity there. Okay, moving to 3A Superintendent Report presented by Dr. Geislin.
Right. Here. Oh, sorry. Well, maybe. Is that me or you? Dana's making me feel good. I'm too flusheated. All right, a quick safety, security, and maintenance update we made, you know, we talked a little bit about the lead testing. It finished up today. And we'll obviously get the results to you when those come in. How many, Marshall, how many water faucets were tested district-wide?
I think about 200 samples. So they, I was living at the high school on Saturday. It took about almost three hours to go through and they sampled everything. Everything's in the bathrooms. They sampled bathrooms, everything else. They did one sample and everything and then a system where they barcoded and labeled where it was from and...
And part of it is you have to let it sit in the pipes long enough. So some of the, like the stadium had to, you know, that has to sit for long enough. So if there's something happening at a stadium at night, you can't test it the very next morning. You have to have so many hours to sit. So that if there happens to be lead in the pipe, then it leaves just in the water and then it would be testable. We have, we've talked about this a few times, but the new water bottle filling stations at Mountain Way. Now all schools have multiple water filling stations, which is really exciting because our students are, you know, they have water barrels at school and this gives them the opportunity to fill them up. The electrical component will be added so that the water's, the water eventually will be chilled. It was really cute. I was at Monte Cristo in PE and students and, and you know, of course, Mr. Schirrmann, I was super grateful for the water filling station in PE. And the students ran up there like, we can get water out of there and everything. That's what we like to hear, right? And so, thank you, Marshall and our maintenance team and all of, all of the people who worked on making that happen. That's been, that's been a project since, kind of since I walked in the door, is making sure that there's access. And so we're excited about that. We purchased a leaf vacuum. I just had to put that on there because I think it's such a cool thing. Instead of blowing leaves, we're like sucking them up and then putting them where they need to go. And it, you know, helps clean up instead of blowing leaves around. We, across our system at all of our schools, participated in the Great Washington Shakeout Drill for earthquake preparedness. And then just to shout out to Granite Falls Police, we have such an incredible relationship with them as a partner. They have really done a nice job of patrolling school zones and giving reminders, maybe sometimes a ticket, but reminders to people to slow down. We have some straightaways, you know, out in front of Monte Cristo and the high school and really even out here. And, you know, in those spaces, we have, we have kids walking, we have kids on bikes, all of the things. And we really, we really appreciate all the work that they are doing to help keep those school zones safe. And then there's some just facility repairs things at, at Tiger Stadium. We had a school board issue. You've probably noticed there's, during some football games, sometimes it's shorted out and then it'll come back on. So they've put in a component, new component board, and hopefully that will be the fix that we need. The crossroads boiler, kind of funny that you're doing the, you know, extreme weather day that could have come up because we had some heating issues, but it has been repaired. It's working efficiently now. But, you know, we continue to have those HVAC needs that, again, will be on the levy if it goes to resolution tonight. HVAC needs in most of our schools, because most of our schools are a little aged. And so, and then we also want to comply with the Clean Buildings Act, which will come first in 2026 for Granite Falls High School, because it goes on size, and then our other buildings. HVAC repairs are not the most exciting thing in the world until you don't have heat and then they are really exciting and you want them to be done. So that will be a focus for us. Teaching and learning update, Executive Director Moore?
Good evening. Lovely to see you. Couple of updates from teaching and learning. As of this evening, you have those beautiful notebooks with all of the school improvement plans for each building. And just wanted to express my thanks to our building admin for their work. As of right now, as you read through those, every building is aligned to literacy, math, and belonging in some way. You know, I want to remind everybody that attendance rate in itself is just a metric of how our students are feeling about being at school and their school experience. So we have worked really hard over the course of the past number of months, actually since last spring, to pull these plans into more close alignment. And there's a little bit of a culture shift. And you'll find some conversations at the community about how, gosh, this is kind of the first time I've seen this before. And we've taken much more of a team approach. We know that when we take a team approach, that there's a lot more buy-in. And so we're really excited to see this alignment, to see what kinds of outcomes that we get from this work. You'll find them much more honed and much more polished into specific goal areas. And then really understanding that, that that first strategy that we're going to use with kids, we understand the value of our teachers here at Granite Falls. And teachers are the highest leverage point to student group. So we are really focusing our professional development on being certain that we are assisting all of the system in being the best that we can possibly be and showing that for kids. And I know that our teachers do that every single day. Special shout out to Colleen Mace and Mike Schirrmann, who are helping with our year two new teachers, but also to our mentors and our year one teachers as well, as they jump into this complex and beautiful career. We know that when we support teachers and the first years of their career, that they have more of a chance of staying in the practice and in the profession. So special shout out to those two amazing humans who are helping to mentor and consult our new teachers. As of this evening, at your will, at your approval, I will be submitting the OSSI grant after you have voted yes on the Crossroads and Open Doors School Improvement Plans. And so that will be complete prior to the deadline, which is fantastic. And that expenditure list can be found in the School Improvement Plans for Crossroads High School and Granite Falls Open Doors. And then as of today, our federal and local grants are uninterrupted, which is great news because, as you know, those grant funds are not an extra add-on. They are funds that help us with day-to-day operations and helping us across our system, support our learners. Helps fund, for instance, our elementary reading programs with the amazing Teresa Watson and Mesa Hall during, during reading remediation education with our kids and those amazing parents that work in that program. So we're happy about that. We hope that that continues. And we're keeping a close eye on our budgeting to make sure that we're being good stewards of our fiscal outlook. Finally, for curriculum, there's a lot of work happening here at the district office and across the system. Our secondary ELA team came together, that's our sixth through 12th grade English Language Arts teachers. We're taking that new curriculum. Thank you again. And we are starting to have those conversations around what an instructional pacing calendar looks like so that we make sure that there, that there is a cohesive learning experience for our sixth through 12th graders. I'll share, as a secondary student, many, 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 many years ago, I had the opportunity to read Huck Finn twice and Romeo and Juliet twice. It's not a bad thing, however, we want to be sure that our students are not getting repeated experience. We want those experiences to build on the next experience. And that takes collaboration, conversation. So we're working on that with ELA. And they're a little bit more ahead of the process because they haven't adopted curriculum. And they have the materials in front of them, which is great. We are also meeting with secondary math and social studies and starting those processes, but starting from the spot where what curriculums are we using? And what is that experience to kind of build that adoption calendar? What do we need to do? For instance, our social studies curriculum is at least 10 years old. So typically we adopt it at the time of work or just prior. So we're building all of that schema. Those instructional pacing calendars are really about what we know about the content that we're giving our students. As a sixth grade teacher, what are the skills that my students are learning? What is the content that they're learning? And what am I expected to do with them to get them ready for seventh grade and on and on? So excited about that work, actually truly excited. And then at the end of the year, we hope to be able to deliver some really important foundational documentation for our district about what's the work that we're doing and what are those experiences that our students are getting? Finally, I want to pay a little bit of attention to CTE. We have an opportunity to, to do a little bit of work to ground our, our business and marketing team, small but mighty, in a standardized curriculum to help with some of that content. So we're working on that. So any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, our district community event's kind of coming up. So I know this was referenced a little bit ago, but we have a student-led, a school board candidate forum at the high school. It's next Tuesday night and it'll start at six o'clock. And Thomas will be our master of ceremonies. And all of our students have created questions and contributed and those kind of things. We're honing those in. And Thomas will, I was actually collaborating with Mr. B today to see how many microphones we have and how we're going to do that. So we're excited about that. It's open to the community, of course. The questions, like I said, they are all student-created. There won't be questions from the audience. It's in a forum setting, it's a little difficult to get questions from the audience. You can't sometimes filter whether those are asked equitably and don't know what people are going to ask. And I, and I want to protect our candidates a little bit in that these are student-led questions. They'll be in front of our candidates. Like I was talking to Carol a little bit about, she's like, yeah, it's kind of nice to have it to reference as you, the question gets asked and it's right there in front of you. So we hope the community joins us there. Our Tiger Cabinet, we have our kickoff. I met with our facilitators today. We have four facilitators. And they're all high school students. And then our Tiger Cabinet is 60 students, grades three through 12, 60-ish. And so there's lots of logistics to getting kids from four buildings over to the high school, because you have to fill out field trip forms and write transportation and all of the things. But it is so good to have so many students there. And so we will be doing that next Thursday is the first Tiger Cabinet. The board is welcome to attend always. Carol, we'd love to have you if you want to come on over the students' plan today, what we're doing at that first meeting, and they had some great ideas. It's great to be with them. And then some upcoming schedule things. We have conferences coming up on November 3rd and 4th. New school for elementary, middle, and crossroads, half-days for Granite Falls High School. That's a change this year. Cross, or Granite Falls High School found that they just didn't have that many parents attending and they, they didn't want the loss of instructional time. So we've made that change this year. Talk a little bit about athletics. It's so fun to be at middle school and the high school and watching our kids shine and working so hard and all of those things. So last night, I was able to be at the soccer game, because it was senior night, and then over to the volleyball game. And our volleyball team played Cedar Park Christian, who is a powerhouse in volleyball, quite frankly. And it was a heartbreaker. They lost it in five, but our girls played amazing and it was a really, really good game. And I was actually like kind of seated amongst all the Cedar Park parents accidentally. And so they were getting a little bit nervous. So there was a lot going on, but the girls played great. Our middle school volleyball team had their pink hat yesterday and I know Tani and Marshall were able to go. I got, I got tied up with something here. But, you know, I love what Tani said. She said, she goes, you know, they're actually pretty good, like they're... I wasn't expecting the level of play to be what it was, right? They're, they're good. And Tani's from Florida. She's like, people can play volleyball out here. So hats off to the coaches and all the girls who are playing hard. Football, we did not have a game last Friday. We should have had a game, but Southwood be canceled. They don't have enough, enough athletes. And so I talked to a couple of football players at the high school today and they're like, yeah, it feels like forever since we've played. And so they're looking forward to this Friday night. And they'll be down playing CPC at Wanda High School, which is down in Kirkland. Huge shout out to Bo Eversen. I saw him today, too. He was the WIA Athlete of the Week and then also the Herald Athlete of the Week, because he had a crazy game a couple of weeks ago. And I did text the Executive Director of the WIA, because he happens to be a friend of mine, and I was like, thank you for recognizing, you know, our small schools, because we have some amazing athletes who work really hard also. And he was like, I love it. I love that you guys, you know, are excited about it and things. So that was, that was great. And congratulations to Bo and his family. She mentioned the girl soccer. Last night had a, had a win over Northwest and it was the final home game. One of our student advisors to the board, Charlie, is on that team. And I love, she thanked her coaches for tolerating her when she gets mad. She's like, thanks for, you know, just tolerating me when I'm mad. And so that was really fun. That's that top picture there. And then our boys golf team wrapped up as well. We had two athletes that qualified for districts. And a huge thank to Battle Creek, thanks to Battle Creek Golf Course. Of course, this is our first year of boys golf and they opened their course to us. And I got a really nice email from the head pro there about how respectful and my golf is a game of etiquette, right? And he said, we are, we are so impressed here at Battle Creek with your Granite Falls athletes. They, the minute they stepped on the course in practice and in everything else, they, our kids are, your kids are just great kids. He goes, not one issue. And he had mentioned when we were first kind of talking about the terms and things, that there was a couple other schools, but there might have been some parents who were overzealous and jumping in carts and driving around and things. And our parents behaved and so did our students. So that makes me very happy as a superintendent. Our cross-country team is preparing for league championships. If you're, happen to, want to go watch something, it's tomorrow in Seattle. And then from that, kids will qualify, if anyone has a qualifying time, to state. And so state is ran down, down in Pasco and it's an incredible course. And that's all the classifications. It's quite a day. It's really fun to watch. Cross-country runners are just such hard workers, bless their hearts. And then we did mention the, the band and we had my social media posts and Thomas stole the thunder. Well, he can, because he's in the band. But they earned such huge recognition over in Yakima, first place in the single A division, best music, best visual, high professional awards, and they advanced to finals. There were some really cool quotes that we put on our Facebook page, but people saying, other people from other schools, and then a judge saying, gosh, how much the band has improved over the years and how fun it is to listen. So well done to our band. Homecoming week is almost here. There's the dress up days, like we talked about. There's a homecoming assembly on Friday. We have volleyball playoffs. The time there is, it might change. We had some logistical things and so we're hoping that it's Friday, maybe four-ish, but there's also the football game. That will be the home football game after. So we'll keep you posted on that. And then I would like to ask, I know we have our principals here, Maria's here and Rhodora's here, what they have coming up at the elementary schools. I know it was mentioned around Halloween, so do you have events coming up?
It's Friday.
It's Friday, okay.
Five to 6:30. Our home race will be open. People will be trick-or-treating.
Awesome.
And that's a shared event.
Oh, very good. Okay.
Yeah, so our kids will be going over to...
Mountain Way. Some will be going back to Mountain Way.
Oh, we don't come to you. I thought we came to you, too. No, oh, it's just us. Oh, because I, the booster says that, and Molly Christ. We're invited.
So see for...
Can I go shop?
Yeah. All right, perfect. And I believe that that is it. So now we're going to go right into, though, if it's, please, is the board. Rachel Quarterman has our special education annual report. We put them together. And so she's going to go over just a sped update for the year. And then if we have any questions on that, we can discuss it at the end.
Okay.
Yep, yes.
So this is our October first student count. This is really the big number that drives a lot of the funding. It's the number that we look at for the year. So this is just some historical data. Our enrollment, I think, is up from the 2,200 that it was October 1st. But if you're wondering why, hey, that seems like we've gone up, it's because we have. But this was taken from October 1st. So those are overall enrollment numbers and those students that currently qualify for special education services. This isn't data that I showed last year. This is taken from our Washington State report card, which we are getting more and more accurate. So one of the luxuries this year is that I have a special education coordinator, who has helped to clean up on the backend of the house in terms of our reporting systems. So how Cedars feeds Skyward and feeds our IAP online system for data tracking. So in the past, we'd always kind of wondered why our Mountain Way numbers seemed a little inflated. It is because preschool was living as part of Mountain Way when we have our own early learning center. So this will be cleaned up for the next year. So that's getting cleaned up on that side of the house. If you look at Mountain Way, last year, at the end of the year, according to Washington State report card, we were 28.8. Currently at this time, we are down. We're 25.9. Monte Cristo's a little up, but a lot of that is, we were seeing some of those systems at the early learning and K2 that we needed to clean up. And as a product of that, some of those numbers have increased as those students move through our system. The middle school, however, is down. The high school's up a little. And some of that's just trending based on cohorts and students in program. Crossroads, I think that's pretty big jump to take a look at. And I had an interesting conversation with one of the GFEM members today around some of the parallels and between what's happening at preschool and what's happening at crossroads around really trying to, at preschool level, make sure that we have enough peer models, because we're quite high at preschool. We're about 30%. Crossroads is about 33.6%. That is up just based on lower enrollment with the sun setting of our agreement with Lake Stephens and those numbers dwindling. But what it does is creates a little bit of a challenge for some of our small class sizes to make sure that we have a gen head setting. Just a comparison, so this is us to the state. Last year at Barn and Lakewood in Salton, we continue to see growth at a similar rate, if not slightly higher than Washington State as a whole. we continue to see growth at a similar rate, if not slightly higher than Washington State as a whole. Let me know if you want me to stop at any of this. I know it's a lot of data. I wanted to share how my team, and when I say team, Jake Brown, our special education coordinator, and Jen Hines, who really provides a lot of the data that we use to make decisions. So we meet weekly, but this is data that we review monthly. So we review our eligibility rate. This is actual eligibility rate from, must have been October as well. We review caseloads, review overload, we review that in regards to staffing. We look at referrals. So are we seeing an increase of referrals? That may be a building or something that needs to be addressed. And then we also look at our discipline. So this is just data that we're looking around how are we making decisions to better improve our practices around not only eligibility, but how we're serving those kiddos as well. Funding. So there are some shifts that I think Marshall and I had mentioned at the end of last year. So the enrollment cap for funded students with disabilities has been removed. The excess cost multiplier has also been increased. The big shift is districts must use BEA funds rather than tapping under funding sources. And then the safety net threshold is lowered. Funding for next year will be delivered quarterly. So what I keep explaining to staff is that we don't have more money coming into special education. What's changing is how that money is kind of rolling out to us. So we're spending, so for example, and I'll get here actually. So for example, for safety net, you can see last year, we submitted about 1.9 of that. We were awarded about 1.912. So for this coming year, if you look, we're actually budgeting a million dollars, which is about a million dollars less than overall that we got. So community impact will no longer be able to apply for. So that million dollars that we're not going to apply for has already been spent. Kind of looking at Marshall to make sure I'm explaining this correctly. So we don't have more money. It's just changing how it's allocated. So then for next year, '26, '27, it'll be rolled out quarterly rather than having to wait for safety net to get those funds. So we have more money on the front end that we are spending. And then we'll be able to, we're thinking we're budgeting right around a million dollars to submit for safety net. Lots of opportunities. So we continue to gain time. I think these were some wins that came out of bargaining for everyone. So we continue to gain time with leadership and staff around professional development coaching. Emily mentioned BEST and some of that coaching we're able to do. Our district leadership team met this week, our elementary leadership team, our secondary leadership team. Emily and I have capacity to do those things, which is really exciting that we haven't had that in the past. Yukiru, Yukiru is something that we've been able to roll out, especially now that volleyball season's coming to an end and it frees up Miss Brower a little bit to be out. She delivered it to some paraeducators at Mountain Way. And then we're looking at times to deliver some of that trauma-informed care to all of our buildings. We're rolling it out, starting at elementaries. Multi-tiered systems of support and alignment. So we're able to work data cycles and referral process. The really exciting piece about this is that we have a student services folder that's up and running with lots of resources for our staff. So one of the neat pieces about having Jake on board is that his expertise is in the technical side of the house. So he's created IEP checklists for our case managers. He's created templates, so priority notice templates for things that case managers can go and grab and make sure that we're in compliance and communicating things that we need to communicate to our families. Our beat, our birth to three transitions are super smooth. We're getting entity codes correct. We're able to track that. We're making our timelines, which has been a challenge sometimes in the past. Some of that is also with being fully staffed. A school psychologist that has allowed us to do some of that work this year as well. And then we have family surveys, which are starting to go out. We've got a handful back, which is super exciting. And what it is, is basically when an IEP is held, there's an email generated on our end that's asking kind of customer service type questions. Do you know there was a meeting? Do you have any questions? Do you feel like you were heard? Basically ensuring that our parents feel like that they're meaningful parts of their student's IEP, which they are.
Before you go on, Rachel, there's indicators that are for compliance. And some of the work that Rachel and her team have done has really helped us hit those indicators so that we don't have findings with OSPI. So that we are talking with families and ensuring that they are understanding the process and the services that their child is receiving. So that cleanup is huge because it doesn't, then also, we want to have great services for kids. It also doesn't expose us legally. It takes all those boxes. And it allows our special educators to spend their time working with kids instead of worrying about all of these paperwork things. If I have a template to look at for a priority notice to a family that's legally compliant, that's really helpful. So that work has been huge. Thank you for that, Rachel.
Lots of celebrations. So we're fully staffed. So when I presented last time, last year at this time, we were not. There were challenges across the board. We are fully staffed in regards to nursing. So not only staffed for our buildings that have nurse-only medications, but we have a nurse on every campus, which is something that we haven't had in the past. Speech-language pathologists. We started out with our SLPs and overload. And we weren't able to start services when we wanted to because of it. We have three in-person speech-language pathologists. We kept one of our tele-help just because she's fabulous and was doing a really good job of supporting our SLPA at the secondary level, which cases tend to be a little bit smaller. Occupational and physical therapists are in place. We were able to hire a student engagement coordinator. So last time when I presented, we were able to hire that till last December. So that freed up really more time for me to be able to address some other things because we have somebody working with our schools around identifying students who are experiencing homelessness and getting those supports in place. We have a teacher of visually diverse who's in person. Last year, we were able to secure somebody who was providing tele-services, which again is not ideal, especially when you're maybe trying to learn Braille. So we have a teacher of the visually diverse that we partner with the Northwest ESD. She's been fabulous and just really have an interval in making sure that we are delivering a high level of service around our students that qualify in the area of TBD. Student services audit. So we basically were auditing the everything. So from supplemental services to how we're marking, are we marking the appropriate tests that students are taking? So specifically around state testing, we aligned our accommodations and modifications with the most updated guidelines for state testing. We were able to identify that we had students that were incorrectly slated to take the WA A. So we were able to provide at each building. So we actually attended each set meeting and were able to provide guidance on how those decisions are made. And then we were able to brainstorm how are we going to correct? So in some cases, it was an assessment revision and the school site was involved. In other cases, it was an IEP amendment to bring the team together and talk about whether that was an appropriate test for that student. Inclusionary preschool, we had a dozen more preschool students than we had planned for. So already opened an additional classroom. We're able to hire, we had a lot of interest in the position, which was very, very cool. But a conversation that we thought we were going to have in February. So luckily we had an extra classroom because we knew it might be an issue. So that teacher has started and has an AM session. And we're continuing to see that program grow. Transition program continues to just excel. If you've ever seen the Mountain Community, they have vocational partnerships everywhere. I don't know where they don't at this point. One of the real cool things is working with Marshall to look at possibly purchasing a van. Just because she's using that program, Miss Brower's using our vans every Tuesday and Thursday. And we just met yesterday and have a meeting next week. And that program continues to grow. And then this is my favorite part of the presentation. So here's just some of our preschoolers, which is a huge celebration. That program, if you ever want to just come out and hang out in preschool, let us know. We'd love to have you. And then our transition program, just doing a really cool job preparing our students for life after school. Lots of partners, not just IGA, Teriyaki Walk. Lots of really cool partnerships within the community.
Community Coalition.
Yes, I mean, everywhere, everywhere. Maybe share the community coalition pictures. So I was trying to, yeah, the school district, like some of them work in the tech department. Just really cool partnerships and meeting our students where they're at. So thank you, Carol, community coalition and all of our community partners. Questions? I don't want to say thank you, but it's really questions. Well, it's a lot of data. You have it hopefully to review.
I don't have any questions, but thank you. That was a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Love to hear that we're fully staffed.
It's, it's very, very cool. It does make all the difference.
Okay, moving on to item 4A, items from the floor, anything? Okay. Moving on to five, unfinished business. We have none. So moving on to 6A, new business, first reading to amend policy, 3110, entrance qualifications. Need additional, or only will go over the others.
Do you have anything on this?
I'm wondering if it's an old.
Yeah, I think it is because there's not a attachment on this.
Yeah. So then I will just make a motion that we strike item 6A from the agenda tonight.
Second.
Okay, motions are made in second. All in favor? Moving to 6B, resolution 2526-05, EPNO levy. I'm reading this or are we just going in straight to discussion?
Yeah, if you read, that would be here until nine o'clock tonight.
So any discussion?
No, I think that we, we worked on this in our work session. And I think that it was put together well by the staff. So I think that I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2526-05.
Okay, motions are made in second. Or wait, second.
Now and then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then 6C, resolution 2526-06, tech and capital levy. Any discussion?
No, I think just same thing that goes at the thing.
Yeah, I think that we had, you know, a lot of input, great input from the staff about where the school district needs to go, what we need to do to maintain our facilities and to do what kind of improvements make our, our properties better for the students and for the community at large. And so I think that we've, at least for me, have satisfied any conversations during that work session.
While not increasing the tax burden.
Absolutely.
There are a lot of districts that are very much still increasing the tax burden. And so we, we know that that's, that's very important. And so keeping everything flat. And that's a, it's a huge, huge point that we're trying to go through. So is there a motion?
I motion that we accept resolution 2526-06, tech and capital levy.
Okay, second. Motion to main and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Seven, moving on to seven, consent agenda. Any additions that are not included in here? Okay, any discussion? Then no discussion, the consent agenda passes with unanimous consent. And the time is now 6:42 and that ends this meeting.